So we will open the meeting at six oh six. And looking for attendance, Mary Lou Lawrence.
Here.
Lynn Breslow.
Present.
Catherine Coffee here, Catherine Harvey's here, Megan Brinsley here, Alison Terry.
Here.
Sarah Peace.
Here.
We're just missing Brooke Jewell and Steve Brown. Um, all right, did everybody look the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Questions, comments, revisions, any kinds? Yeah, your motion to pass approved. So second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, all right. I want to introduce Michaela Brennan. She's our library technician, covers the front desk, been with us.
Two and a half.
Two and a half, yes, thank you. Uh, and previously worked at two other libraries, or well, you can tell your story again.
Before I came here, I was working for time at Tuss Weymouth Library, as well as the Pembroke Library. And then while I was in college, I was working at the BSU Library for about four years.
Hit the ground running as soon as she joined the staff, which is really, really great, so.
So you handle all the tech challenges?
I'm on the backup backup of the checklist.
Did you get everyone, do you know, hear everyone's name, or do you want?
It wasn't fast, so.
We have some long-term people here and. I'd say maybe Sarah is the longest.
Regretfully, yeah.
Regretfully, this is Sarah Peace, Alison Terry, Megan Brinsley, Catherine Harvey, Carolyn Coffee. Catherine is our chair, by the way, um, and. Elaine Breslow, and there Lou Lawrence. And we're missing Steve Brown, you probably know, because he does come here sometime, and Brooke, yeah, and Brooke is our clerk. So she takes the minutes when Angela is out. And runs the, the meeting when Catherine's out, yeah, so. Do you want to talk about yourself at all, or do we, everyone have questions, or? This is sort of like, there isn't really a set format to how we do this, so.
Do you want to tell us sort of like an average day? What it involves and?
So I kind of do four main things, the checking in and checking out books, and then in relation to that, shelling books. And then I also run a lot of our circulation reports, so looking for missing books, contacting other libraries when something's gone awry. Uh, just try and make sure that we have everything we say we have and where we say we have it. And then I also do, um, a good amount of the displays out in the main area, um, as well as some passive programming. Um, so kind of anything that just sits there and you interact with it at your own time frame, over the course of two weeks to a month.
Well, the displays are.
Yeah, they're great.
Absolutely, yeah, I think it looks great out there.
It's really, I think, your favorite.
It's always, it always looks good.
He really loves doing it, and it's been really successful. Um, we kind of focus on it a little bit more, and, you know, the, people aren't taking the books, you know, and, and so it's increased the circulation. And I liked some things that, you know, maybe I've already, once something leaves the new area and goes off to the shelves, there's sometimes that's the last it goes out. So it's kind of nice to bring some things back and, you know, highlight them.
It brings a real, some vibrancy to the opening the library too. It sort of pulls the patrons in, I feel.
Great, yeah. And then she's helping with, it's, it's a little tricky because the library technician job really doesn't involve programming. But we've been letting the library techs assist with the, when the librarian creates a program if they want to help. So she's actually, it's not really more than assisting to create the, um, the Harry Potter trivia that's coming up. All the questions and then, you know, that kind of thing, so. And I, I, we're trying to find ways to make the job a little bit more, more to it than just, you know, and certainly. Um, assisting patrons is probably the most important thing we do here, but, you know, that can get a little old and stale afterwards. We're trying to find things within the job description that we can, we can ask them to do, or they can, they can take on, so. Uh, I think it's working pretty well, and, um, Michaela does really seem to like the displays, and is doing a really great job with it, so. I'm glad to be able to get, give her that opportunity, so. Yeah.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Questions for the group, or?
No.
No, I just want to go join the party.
As you should, but, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, so. Moving on, is my? Okay, um, I realize as, I was looking at it, this is a very long report, so I, I, I'll go quickly. Is there something you want to talk about in more in depth? Yes, great, I'm happy to, to, uh, pause and, and, um. Shed more light on some of the things going on, so, uh, we've been super busy. It feels like this month was just packed with things, uh, we've been dealing with. The first thing I wrote about is Jenna and I met with, uh, our town planner, and, uh, they have gotten a grant. For, um, public art, it's a fifteen thousand dollar grant. Three thousand of that is for maintaining whatever they put up, and ready installation, that kind of thing, and twelve thousand is for purchasing. Some kind of art, uh, it'll be outside, and they wanted, they decided they, to ask us, they'd like to use the front lawn of the library. So we met with them, just to kind of get a feel for what we were even talking about, um, and it's very, at the very, very early stages. But from what we understood is they would kind of, they were asking us. What kinds of things we would like to see, um, do we want it to be interactive? We were talking about maybe it should have some seating element, because people sit on everything out there, they like to sit out front. Uh, they showed us some pictures of other libraries that had done this, and, uh, there was a kind of a. Wooded sort of looking structure that had shade and then seating and that kind of thing. Uh, so what they do is then post that they have this project, and artists submit bids or suggestions of what they'd like to do. So it would then be, uh, approved before we even move any further, so. Um, I think it's a really great idea, I love it, I think, uh, there's a lot of creative people, as you can see from the tiny art. Um, and so I think it would be kind of. Great visual, and, um, we'll see what people, what they come up with, so.
And that would be something we would vote on, right?
I think so, yeah, I, it, I, they were gonna also include the cultural council, so they would have a few. Entities in town to kind of. You know, come to consensus of what they want to do, um, it certainly wouldn't be anything provocative, I just picturing more of something that, um. You know, would, would get people's attention and can be, um, sat on, maybe kids would climb on it or something, just a, sort of an interactive piece of art.
Oh, let's not do like an Alice in Wonderland sculpture, like in Central Park.
Yeah, I mean, and there's so many ways that they, they could go with this, so, uh, you know, but like I said, it's the very early stages, they do have the grant in hand, so, uh, they do have the money. Um, and there's, I guess, apparently, um, some websites that you can, you know, you, you would post if you had a, you know, a. A grant that you wanted people to apply for, so.
Where do you, where would we, are you thinking it would go?
That was the question, because there's, uh, it would, you know, obviously, one side or the other of the sidewalk, one side is very shady, so it really would depend on. What they submit as their suggestions. If it has a shade element to it, then it could be over on the, on the sunnier side. If it's, uh, more of a seating kind of thing, there was, I should have brought the pictures, I didn't, one was like a. A book, an open book, but made out of, um, you know, like foliage materials, and, and kids could climb on it, you know, so that, that sort of thing. There was a table that had a stack of books was the, uh, the legs for it. Um, so all kinds of just different variety of things, so I, I would, if it's, if it is something that, um. Wouldn't have a shade, then it would probably go on, on the, the shadier side, I would think. But, uh, I'm open to any, when we get to that point, I think that would be a good, good decision.
It would be protected by the, but be protected.
It's made for outside, yes, it's made for outside, yeah, yeah, so, um. I, I think, I think it's a great idea, and I hopefully then we get some. Creative suggestions, and we can all talk about it when, when they come back, when they come in.
So who is it again, sorry, I?
It, well, this is the kind of funny thing, because it's the, it's the, uh, town planner, Cassandra, and her assistant town planner got the grant. And so, I don't know, I was surprised that that was the people that were, you know, spearheading this. And when they first reached out, they said, you know, we have a grant for public art, so I was envisioning that there would be art sprinkled around town, you know, maybe something on the common, and, you know. Sure, something here, but, you know, other places, but they said they have enough for one item, and they just, they would like to have it here.
Not enough for a bronze statue or.
That's what the Alice in Wonderland thing is.
Yeah, yeah, or there's in DC, there's that great sculpture garden, you know, there's all kinds of, uh, uh, outside art, that's amazing, and, and that was how I pictured it, um.
But you don't know how much money they're talking about.
They're twelve thousand dollars.
Oh.
Well, it's fifteen thousand, but they thought that three thousand was going to be for, um, upkeep, you know, and, uh, installation and that kind of thing. So they wanted to spend twelve thousand.
Upkeep, I can just see you going at their policy.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
My oath's gonna be if it requires upkeep.
Sure, yeah.
We know how that goes in this town.
Agreed, uh, that's, yes, that's something that would have to certainly be discussed. It, it depends on the material they're using, and, and.
On the scale of it. Yeah.
So, you know, I, I, the way I left it was. I think it's a great idea, I'd really like, I need more information.
Yeah.
You know, um, but.
I don't think the cultural council is gonna be useful to them, I don't know if they understand.
I guess, if they were gonna have someone maybe from the art center.
Yeah, right. Well, they could, yeah, but that's what they're, they issued grants.
Talking about them weighing in, which I didn't know.
Unlikely, but I, I don't know who's on it anymore, so.
So could we, if we didn't like it, could we say no?
I think so, yeah, I think that we were their first choice as a location, but if, if that didn't work out, I'm sure that they could find another location to, to put that, they didn't. That wasn't part of the grant, that it was going to be at the library. They are, as far as I know, they've already been approved for the grant without even asking.
Depending on what it is, a, a great place for it, for something like that would be in between the in and out. Where, of the driveway where that, they had to take that tree down, it's rather barren now.
How big, yeah, right, if it's, if it's.
Then it's sized, yeah.
Yeah, depending on.
But if it's meant to be climbed on, you don't want it by the driveway.
Well, potentially.
But so the next step is request for artists, or outreach to artists for concepts?
Yes, yes, apparently there's, you know, same as, as you do a state bid, there's a, a few platforms that you can post if you have a commission.
So the artist would know that it was gonna be here in Cohasset, and in front of the library, and then they would design or create something.
Exactly, within the price.
Within the primaries.
Exactly, so.
So it will not be bronze?
Which they could put next to the pavilion.
The mouse in the garden.
I mean, I didn't really. I didn't really propose doing anything over in that area, I know, because I just, who, we don't know what's going on, and it's still up in the air, um. But there's that corner, I mean, it's a, potentially, we could use that corner, um, be great for visibility.
Just inside, you could do it just inside.
Yeah, so, again, we need, we have a lot more questions that need to be answered before we can, can make any determination like that. But I just wanted to let, get you in the loop and let you know what was, um, what was being talked about, and, um. I mean, I think it could be great, it could be really, really great.
Submit your proposal.
That's right. I'm not gonna make, no, it was Karen. Sue you, elaborate. So I will, I will keep you posted as soon as I, I get more information, uh, from the, the planning office. The next thing is about, uh, community services, uh, Megan had asked us to try to come up with ways that she can share information to all the boards. I, I guess she was sort of referencing the, um, open meeting law, um, training that she did. Uh, she's, wanted us to brainstorm ways to make it fun, uh. Uh, I'm not, I'm a little caught.
How do you feel about it?
So, just, I'm just letting you know that she's trying to come up with, you know, maybe it would be a food truck and then a training, or a, some sort of.
I was just gonna say, food is usually what.
Yeah, so, um.
Fun, fun.
She's hoping to kind of get, not necessarily, uh, I don't think that this board is raising red flag, but I think that there's a lot of boards that have new members. That maybe don't know all of the, um, rules of, of what you, you need to be doing, so. That may be coming down.
Sorry, so she was, she's asking for, she wants to create an event where the members of different committees get together. Is that allowed, by the way? That's allowed, right?
Yes, probably you can't. But if you had, if anyone had any ideas, I mean, the only thing that I could think of is when the new courts are open, maybe it's like a pickleball tournament, and food truck, and. Everyone does that, and then talks about open meeting law or some other.
You know, I think it's just tennis court.
Yeah, I thought we were gonna line it though, the other way as well, because you can fit an outdoor muddy screen.
I took the dogs walking over there, and they had, I think it was set up for five courts, like four hands.
Yeah, but I think you can line the tennis courts across way, and you can fit four pickleball courts in the tennis court, that was my understanding.
I hope they're for it.
Yeah, well, they do have it here, I've seen in the summer, they put a portable net up and.
By the, on the basketball.
On the basketball court, and people use it, I've seen them, I think it's through the senior center, they're out playing in the morning, so. Anyway, we'll, we'll see what comes of that.
So that's like the library challenging the planning board.
Yeah, it might be fun. I, and I've never played pickleball, so I don't really know what I'm talking about, but, uh, it could be fun. Um, or just come for the, the meeting and skip the pickleball. We were, well, Angela can probably speak to this better, but we're closing in on our smart boards, writing the purchase order as we speak, um. And we're gonna have, they're both mounted in the two study rooms, and one will have video conferencing capabilities, so that people can. Set up their Zoom meeting and have.
Is this primarily for the tutoring?
Uh, well, no, we're hoping, uh, like, more people like that, you know, have meetings or Zooms or anything, like.
And do they now? Does anyone use to decide to tutor?
People do have meetings, yeah, yes.
There's people that have meetings, like, when there's no other space in the middle of the library, I've like walked by and been like, oh, I'm on somebody's.
Even when there's plenty of space, they do that.
But, um, some people use this room to have meetings.
Yeah.
Um, but we, it, it's, it's been on the strategic plan for a while, and, um, the idea is that someone could book the room, you could have a few, you could be a hybrid, you know. And have people in person, and then also, um, use a smart board as a. Virtual. So.
But I think the.
But tutors will use it as well. Yeah, um, yeah, they have a lot of them at the school, so the, the tutors should be used to how they work. But we've got a great price.
We've got a really good price.
And they're gonna, and the company's gonna install it, and it's also gonna give free training to all the staff on all the features. Yes, we'll be a little. You know, yeah, once we get the training. Do a lot, um, and I'm sure we don't know, probably half of what we can do, so, um. Hopefully that will, they'll, they'll, uh, get in place soon, soon. And then just the museum pass list is now through OCLN, uh, they're in an effort to increase usage of the museum passes. We are, uh, sharing our list with other, with, with other residents of other towns. It used to just be, you had to live in Cohasset to get a museum pass, uh, the new protocol is if the day of. You, you want the aquarium pass and it's available, you can take it out regardless of where your, your library card is come, is from, so. That works both ways, so our residents will have access to all of the libraries, library, uh, museum passes, so.
Are the museum passes mostly like a piece of paper, or?
Not really much anymore, it's mostly electronic, it's mostly, uh, you. After COVID, a lot of museums went to reservations, so that you have to book in advance. Um, it used to be timed, now it's more, you just have to at least buy your ticket, and so, uh, the museum pass discount, you usually are given a code. And you just enter that when you're booking your, your ticket.
How would a person know that Cohasset, for example, has one that's unclaimed on day X?
So OCLN is posting that list, and so you could look at that, and most of them say call the library, because the way we have it, you have to override. And so the, someone from the staff would have to reserve the pass for the person. Um, you couldn't just do it with your library card, because it's set to, the, the, the number on the library card, the first five digits are unique to Cohasset. So if you were from Hingham and you were entering your card, it would flag it that it's not a Cohasset resident, so it has to be overwritten. So that's how, you know, I don't think it'll happen very often, the good thing is that if we do this and make it available, we can use all the. Funds that we spend, which is forty-five hundred dollars or so, uh, on the museum passes, we can count that towards our materials expenditure.
Nice.
If we don't, if you keep them in house, in, in town, I guess you'd call it, it doesn't, it doesn't count. So, um, it's a good way to, to boost up meeting that, that benchmark. Librarians are working on collection development policy, I will share that with you next meeting, I probably should be voted on, it was last approved in two thousand and five. And materials have changed quite a bit, it is apparently a Massachusetts State law that we have a collection development policy. And, um, it's a good idea to take a look at it regularly, so they're working on, uh, what they want it to look like. Part of it, which is, um, really probably more relevant now is, is you, part of the policy is how do you add items to your collection? People come in with a self-written book, it's nice to be able to say, well, we have a policy of who's gonna decide if we're adding this. But the more important part is how do we remove items from the collection with all the, um. Emphasis on, uh, it's called request for reconsideration, removing items from the library. You really need to have a policy that says, you know. We will, this group of people, be it, uh, the director and the adult services librarian, or whoever it is, is going to look at the book and will make a decision. And you have to have that in, in a policy.
Right, we did that with Megan, yeah, we, we, we approved a policy for this stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it, it needs updating, though, um, because it, there's a, there's a lot of suggestions that, in the stuff that I've been reading, where it's things like you. You can say a person can only request reconsideration once per month, or, uh, the same item once every six months. So, you know, there's, there's parameters that you can put on the policy that, uh, kind of limits the ability, someone could write two hundred.
Yeah.
Reconsiderations, you know, and so it's sort of important to kind of control the, the narrative.
Limit the.
Exactly, so, yeah, exactly, so they're, they're, they're working on that, and, um, when we get it kind of, uh, polished, we'll have everyone take a look at it, and. And hopefully approve that, so that we can put it in place. We did do a grant request, uh, to the CPC for really more of these type materials, the boxes, the archival boxes, their sleeves, there's all different kinds of. I don't know where, oh, these are sort of for tubes, um, Allison and McKenna have been going through everything in here, and a lot of the materials are really deteriorating. There's, there, this room is really not appropriate, it's not, there's light that comes in, humidity, it's not humidity controlled, it's not temperature controlled, really. It's hot right now, but it's usually very cold, uh, so some of the items are really being negatively impacted. Uh, and so we thought maybe the CPC would help us, because the, the materials are expensive, archival quality materials, so, um.
The historical society is also in the process right now of, they've got all those gray boxes and things.
Yeah, yeah.
Do they, they have a room, though, don't they, to put, put it in?
I don't.
They're kind of like shelves, it looked like, it was even in the main area, I was just talking.
Oh, it isn't, right?
Yeah, but maybe they were just working there to get things organized, and then they put them.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know, their, their items are, are probably far more historical than ours, um. I think anything that's super valuable would be there, I don't think we would, would store it here, although some of the things are, are. Unique to Cohasset, and you, you wouldn't want to have them.
Maybe the town needs to give some money to the historical society to set up a room.
Do you remember when Steve and Jim were working on their plans for the building, they were talking about putting a, this, a, a room in the basement? That could be temperature controlled and all of that, and it was gonna turn out to be very expensive, and. I think the idea was you'd have to have an elevator, because you'd have to have access, so it was gonna be a whole. It was out of our, our, our range, but, um, this is all we have for now. And so we can at least protect them somewhat, we'd like to do that, so, we'll see, uh, hopefully they would, they will approve that, and, um. And we can purchase some more items, so. Um, Tiny Art Show, you all saw it, and it came through, um. Sarah, the program was really fantastic, the, um, the brain health.
Was good.
Yeah.
Running nice for now?
Your head, yeah, it was a good turnout, and thank you for, for thinking of us, um, and I think that Jen has been talking with them about.
She's been really active with them.
Yeah, yeah, because she's, she thinks that this is a topic that is relevant to everyone, um. How do you?
Brain health.
Yeah, brain health, yeah.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
And, and even, I, the, the article you sent me, um, from The Economist, was talking about, here's some of the factors that affect you. Keeping your.
Yeah.
Your facilities as long as possible, but one of them was, uh, the quality of your education as a child. So it actually, the, the factors are not just things you do later in life, you know, crossword puzzles, or social interactions and things like that. There's a, a series of factors all through your life that can affect.
So that's why we're cutting the Department of Education.
And all summer research too, so, yeah, they're really.
Working at both ends.
Work, exactly, but, uh, but it's really interesting, and I do think that there's, that's something that people are, are interested in, so, uh, Jen's gonna pursue that further. I don't know if you've been watching Allison's YouTube videos, but they're really, they're great, and she's been, uh, we're so happy that she's agreeing to continue to do them, um. And, uh, highlight things that are going on here.
And how, how are those disseminated, like, how do people?
So, uh, it is on.
Other than in your directors?
It's on one four three TV, and it's, uh, we've been putting it on, uh, our webpage, and you just on the homepage. It says, here's what's going on at the library for, for February, and you just click on it and it shows it. So, and I think other, um, social media, I think, uh, Ash is putting it, probably a link on Facebook and kind of thing.
And is it getting many views?
Yeah, yeah, more than if it was just on one four three TV, I think, um.
So we can count the clicks on it?
It's, it's, uh, we couldn't, we, I know we could count on, you know, on Facebook or something, uh, I, I, and I'm pretty sure we could probably put on our website. I know that there's a lot of, um, uh. Our marketing things, our MailChimp, I can check the clicks on that, you know, so we can find out, um, but. Uh, I think it's, it's a great little kind of, here's the library, here's what we do, and so she tries to pick a different thing to talk about every, uh, every month, um.
Is it embedded in the, uh, the monthly newsletter, the E newsletter that goes out?
I don't know if she has it every time, I know she has had it, um, it's, the E newsletter is kind of tricky, because it's, um, we're trying to just stick to, you know. One page, essentially, uh, and so, um, it's, it's a little. One page essentially, uh and so um it's it's a limited space, but um. I can tell, I can.
Um icon in the corner or something?
Yeah, I was just actually looking at, that's through MailChimp and the last one we sent out. It was talking about uh museum passes and that had like two hundred and fifty-four clicks. And then even all the way down to the bottom, the Friends had five clicks. You know, like, which is surprising, you know, you don't know that people are even reading all the way to the bottom and that they would then. Take that next step and 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 click, so hopefully that gets some donations to that, but. Anyway, uh to do, we're doing a a table at the um. Health and Rec Fair that's gonna be shared with other community services groups um. And which is, I believe, is Elder Fairs and Safe Harbor are also gonna be there, so uh. I I'm not sure, it's just gonna outreach, I guess, just to keep our our name out there um. Programming, everybody knows that Craft or Dark is starting up again, that's. A lot of excitement, uh which we really, it's gonna be great, because Gail.
What's the first craft, it's already so oversubscribed?
It's already oversubscribed, it's a candle with the um. Ratan uh outside, yeah, so you make that that part of it and and then take the candle home, so. Yeah, you gotta sign up early if you wanna do it, um because she's pretty popular.
Craft or Dark, it means it's happening at night.
It's at night, yeah, it all started during covid, she would do a, you'd pick up your craft in a bag and then she'd do a Zoom. You know, video on how to do it.
She kept it going that way, yeah, during covid, yeah.
She's she's done it a while, yeah.
I did a few of them.
Yeah, and then she has, there was a lot of. Bits and bobs upstairs, leftovers, and so she kind of went up and sort of looked to see what she could use and. And uh you know, start some some new ideas, so.
It started, remember she made like the um Christmas tree out of books and she did the turkey. And and everyone was so animated about what she did, that that's what prompted it.
Everything she said, so I know.
I lost mine in a basement flood, so.
We should do it again this year, seems to be that that's uh everyone needs a new book turkey, so uh I will. I love it.
Just make sure that the trustees get first dibs on something.
I know, yeah, that's the whole thing, you gotta be really quick about it because um it's super popular, but um. So speaking of the Friends, they did do a raffle bag uh over um Valentine's Day. Brought in uh eight hundred and fifty-five dollars, um almost all of the items were donated, so uh that was pure. Gain, I guess, profit um.
Donated by who?
Different groups around town, there was a bottle of wine, uh there was a blanket, there was um, I don't know, they will. She's very energetic, I guess, this is where she's full of energy and she has no problem asking people. A gift certificate or, you know, any type of thing. So she's put together, sort of was, it wasn't, it wasn't just Valentine's really, it was supposed to be cozy, like, you know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Warm and here's a book and a candle or something like that, so it was, it was a great bag and um she's gonna do it every. I don't know, a few months, I know she's been doing a summer one, a banned book one. I forgot if there was another one.
We talked about, yeah, getting some books together for it, um that's gonna be in September.
So, so it'll bring in money and and um the the Friends are really a bunch of money at this point, but it always is more.
Yeah, I saw that in the minutes um made me think that maybe um landscaping. Might be a wonderful investment.
It could be, I so, I mean, not to skip ahead, but you know, there there are there are. Changes going on in the Friends Board and um. So that could lead to other changes, so. I would say TBD, I mean, if, I mean, since we're on the topic, I'll just say what they, what the numbers are. The annual appeal so far is at forty-two thousand fifty-six dollars and twenty-four cents. Which is a sizable increase over last year at this time, which was only thirty-three thousand. Um they have an incoming donation from a trust. Um I guess was was that a request or no, it was sort of.
Fifteen thousand, so actually, I think they already have it, but she's not, wasn't counting it into the. What they brought in from the annual. It was a a state.
Right, a state that was dissolved and uh so so incoming since the start of the appeals fifty-seven thousand. Um and their overall balance is over a hundred, so. They're doing great that way and, you know, with the the books, the Bay State Books has continued to be really fruitful. Um and the following up, I think they they learned a couple of years ago when they did a letter writing campaign to former donors who hadn't given to the annual appeal. It yielded a great result, so this year, I think last year and this year, they just did it via email and it was still. Tremendously helpful, so this year they did an email blast, they got twelve more donors for another thousand dollars. Um and there, we're still at about the same. Number of donors annually, they're sort of hitting the the average number right about now. Which sort of says that people who are giving are giving a little bit more generously, which is great. Um and also that there's still room for growth, so that's sort of what's going on with the Friends um. So we're down three board members as of this week for the Friends, so. Just to say again, if you know.
It was probably time to shape.
I think that's right, yeah, but we we're not necessarily anticipating additional departures and that's how it happened, so. Um if you know anybody who is interested in the library and also I think they're trying to open it up. More to the way that it was done in years past. In that reminding that everybody who donates to the Friends is a friend and everybody can get involved as a volunteer. And, you know, sort of we have the board and then we have the Friends and sort of trying to increase the participation and increase the sense of. Ownership over the the programming and participation in the library, um so that's sort of.
Decide to bring that in the board member, like, how does that work?
Like, please, will you come to a meeting? Nope.
It's so it's usually someone knows, it's a friend of someone or whatever, um so Barbara Canny just came back and and that was Barbara Ren. Had ran into her at the store and she said, oh, I'm looking for something to do, why don't you come back to the Friends? But uh they the bigger picture is that there are a lot more people who are friends, they're just not on the board and. That's how this came up last week, I said, you know, we're doing this art show. It would be really great if we had a couple extra set of hands that could set up the table and that sort of thing. So I said, would the Friends, you know, ever go back to that model of, they used to help. Sunday Author Talks, they always helped and.
Well, and many, yeah, and many, many years ago, you, all the young moms in town. I mean, you didn't have time to really make a commitment to anything, but if you had a couple of hours.
Exactly.
We tend over brownies.
So they were excited about it. And they thought that they could get more people to join if you came to a program and you could see, you know, or you know, or say the summer reading. Though that's, there's so many kids that come, if you were a mom or a caregiver, I should say. You could come to the program, have your child watch and you could help sort of, you know, wrangle the kids or something like that, so. I've asked the staff to come up with sort of a general list of what kinds of things they think the Friends could help with. You know, even if it's just cleaning up after Lego Club, that's a lot of work and, you know, by the end of the day. Staff is tired and it would just be great if somebody could help move along so they're not, you know, staying late to clean up. So uh once I get the list together, I'm gonna share that with the Friends and they'll probably come up with some kind of a, you know, Google Doc.
On on the monthly newsletter, where you have the Friends at the bottom. How about a an intriguing? Get involved, you know, one, once a month meeting, you know.
Well, I was just gonna ask, so it's once a month during the day usually though, right?
Yes, it's the the first Thursday at nine thirty. Um which, yeah, maybe it makes it tricky, I don't know, I think that we've had difficulty reaching the. Young people in town and getting them interested and getting and getting involved, I mean. I, you know, I wonder if maybe something that they would consider is like having somebody. You know, one day a week, someone goes into the children's room and maybe tries to, you know. Talk to people, you know, and see if that would work, but we can discuss that.
They could definitely change their signage because it's now just about donating, but it could also say, you're interested in helping.
Right.
You know, uh we have.
So I I used to bring Virginia to the Friends meetings because, you know, she was quiet and she just sat there.
Yeah.
Um but, you know, could we provide, you know, like a little program for an hour in the children's room? For people, you know.
Think they're actually, well, it's not at nine thirty, but there is, there usually is a Thursday program.
Could mom come to the meeting and?
Well, I also think too that we we used to always have a friend at every program. And that hasn't been true in a while, I don't know if that was the covid casualty or what, but we used to always, one of us would be, would try to be there.
It's so helpful, you're, everyone's working so hard to raise money and then you don't even get to see what the results of your work.
And the friend would usually introduce the program and staff were there, or at least sometimes, some of the ones that I went to, we did it that way.
It's actually a very interesting thought because.
Because that's when you could reach them too.
Why we're here and it also gives the Friends recognize, you know, like a little pat on the back.
Yeah, but it's, it would be a good opportunity to solicit some volunteering too, yeah, so if we go back to that model.
And and I, you know, all the stuff that I do about.
Enough people to do that right now, it's honestly the issue, I mean.
But I think there are people that maybe can only do. An hour a month or something, they don't have a lot of time to join a, join a board and be involved in in that sort of thing, but they would be willing to come. And, you know.
Help with mom's step.
Or maybe in two years when their kids are in kindergarten.
They're looking, so right now you're looking for board members, but more importantly, to feed the funnel, you're looking for more.
It is both, yeah.
Yeah, it's it's definitely both, because, I mean, we have, we have Beth who's been the chair or the president now for. A long time and I'm sure she would be delighted to hand it off if somebody else were around who were interested in doing it.
To be a Cohasset resident? To be part of.
And Meg Wheeler, who's a CPA, and she's now gonna take over the accounting and handling the books, which Barbara Ren. Did for sixteen years, so she has very detailed records, it's great, Meg can handle it super easily. So she will handle all that, yeah, um and then uh. She's like, that's a lot, she does, you know, all of that. And um Barbara Canny who just joined and Lanier and Melissa Hopple, who is also very energetic and is a great help, but. I mean, that's basically, yeah, like maybe two people who could be go, I mean, I would, I would go. If I could, you know, anytime that I was free, I would, I would go to a program or something, but anyway, so we're in rebuilding, so. Like, put your feelers out and try to do some recruiting for the Friends, um if you can.
Yeah, I think there's people out there, just don't know.
Yeah, so if you have a neighbor or somebody, you know, send them our way.
Yeah, we'll take, we'll take off. Um so, okay.
All right, so that takes care of the Friends.
So then I'm on finance, um our next year's budget request was basically approved. Um Chris knocked off thirty thousand dollars of what I asked for for personnel, but he approved getting a. A uh assistant director, so I'm not quite sure how I'm gonna make that work.
Change some titles.
Um, yeah.
Did we vote on that?
We, that was at the last meeting, we we talked about it, yeah, yeah.
But we didn't vote on it. I think we go.
We'll check the minutes.
Um I wanted to ask, um so the staff is no longer unionized?
Right.
That uh it's it's not official yet, there's now a new uh wrinkle because. Uh you have to go through the Department of Labor to do this and they cannot find the certification. It's been recognized but not certified.
Cash for years.
Yeah, so there's that and there's a time, all these time limits of when things have to be done. The union can also uh. Say that they don't want that to happen, so they they could uh put up a roadblock. Um it's in progress, let's just say. And so, well, the um the Town Hall Clerical Union disbanded. Three years ago, a couple of years ago, yeah, maybe two years ago now, uh and it sort of set the stage where. Our um the union rep also retired and the new one never contacted us at all. So.
So. The library was the only staff on union.
Well, I think uh. The teachers, you know.
Rest of the town down.
As far as I understand, yeah, so uh we're just logging in to begin with and we have a lot of.
Sorry, I just gotta take off. Oh, guys.
I, we have enough to cast the bills, so.
Getting back to the assistant director, did you vote on that at the last meeting?
To pursue.
Um so. Getting an assistant director, because I don't think that that that's that's more of a personnel. But we it was more also the idea, we didn't even know if it was gonna be approved, because Megan has had asked for one. A few times and it was always, you know, you had a great idea.
I read that in in your report, so he approved the position, but yet deducted thirty thousand dollars.
Said, I, this was, he didn't talk to me about, he talked to Megan and um. So the the understanding is that. The the thirty thousand dollars doesn't necessarily have to come out of the payroll. We could spend less in other categories and make up the difference, as long as we stay within the total amount that was.
So you could, you could theoretically change the job descriptions. And make a technician add thirty thousand and call it an assistant or change the job description or whatever.
So.
It's just that your overall budget doesn't accommodate for adding a full-time assistant director in addition to everything we already have.
He did say we can add another person, so we could maybe take someone that's already here. Bump them up to assistant director and maybe add an entry level person. With, if we could stay within the numbers. Uh or Megan was saying, maybe you delay hiring that that extra person for a couple of months. That means that's that much less salary and that work makes up the difference, so I I haven't, it's. I'm sorry?
Then you'd have trouble next year.
But then you're already in place and then the the reason he did it is that the jump is fairly large. Because it was uh including everyone's uh step raises and cola and then this extra position, so he was like, that's a lot of money to. Jump, so if you do it smaller, then by next year, it's not a really that much of a big jump. Because it's just that the difference there, so um it still has to be approved um at town meeting. I believe that um it went through advisory. Um and all the other. Things are are in place, so. We'll see, we're okay for now, but it would be, it's really, uh it's necessary, I I feel. We're open to many hours uh to not have another person, a second in charge, it's just, it's. I do occasionally take vacations and uh and just, you know, need another person, it's not really fair to the staff to ask them to make decisions. When they're not being paid, you know, for that responsibility, so. I will keep you posted. I will keep you posted. Uh, the CLT monies are in the account, um. Capital budget, I didn't hear it officially, I heard it from Corey Evans that they did approve the security cameras. Um, so I don't know anymore about that, that's IT is, man, take, is taking over the management of that. It would be really nice because we just had a window broken on the children's room ten nights ago, would be nice.
Deliberately.
It seems like it, I, unless a very large bird ran into it, it would have to be. It's a big window and it's up high, so I think it's.
Not that windstorm, couldn't it have been the windstorm?
Yeah, uh, cause there was a bird with the wind.
Wicked windstorm.
Yeah, this was just two days ago, two, two months ago.
It's still been on Saturday, but who knows?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, again, we don't know, it would be, we, we have camera, we could say, oh, it was just a rock. So, anyway, we'll see, let's go, what happens with that. Um, and then, I'm just gonna try to run through these things quickly, we did look at the carpet today, um. We're, I think narrowing down on some options and, uh, we're trying, gonna try to get a couple of different, uh, quotes so that we can kind of make a more informed decision on that. Hopefully we'll get that done.
The good news is we found some things that we liked.
Yeah, yeah.
Or if we think we like, we, we're gonna get.
Yeah, it's hard to tell from a little rectangle, but I think, um, they'll go with the colors and they'll be, um, a little more vibrant and, and more, uh, appropriate for the space. Um. Other than that, I don't know if, um, Carol, if you wanna talk about the pavilion, um. Just.
Uh, the, the bids were supposed to be due today, um, the good news is, uh, there were three people, um, we, interested bidders who asked a bunch of questions last week, they submitted them. They, good questions, they were given to the architect to answer and he didn't have the time to respond quickly. So they extended the deadline from today to next week. Um, so, but at least there are three people asking questions, that doesn't mean not necessarily all come to the table with a, with an offer, but, um, but Michelle is optimistic, so, but that's where we are, so, they'll be open on the nineteenth.
Next week.
And is it syllable divided into thirds or is it? Like, are we still doing?
We did add alternates, yeah, it's gonna be.
Yeah, so that, that gives us more flexibility.
And part of that was to get transparency in the pricing, so that they couldn't just.
Huge number.
Lump sum.
Exactly, so, um, okay, and then I, I won't, the rest of the things we've already kind of talked about, we did, I attended the legislative breakfast, that was very well attended, uh, the two things that they are pushing for, other than extra state aid, is, uh, better pricing for our e-materials because, um, libraries pay an exorbitant amount for ebooks. Uh, and, and the, once you buy it, you don't get to keep it forever, like if a private person did. Uh, so we pay more and there's a lot of restrictions on it, so they're talking about trying to um, ease the, the burden a little bit, and then the other thing is, um, to do with the reconsideration of the books in the, they're gonna create a law, if it passes, that would protect librarians, as long as they follow whatever the policy is, there can be no repercussions for uh, if they, if someone doesn't like what the answer is about, uh, removing book or any type of material, so. Uh, hopefully that will kind of, uh, strengthen the, um, support for librarians, so those are the two big bills that I know of that, that they're trying to support.
Which is another reason why we have to make sure that our challenge policy is in order, because I, I think, I think Sandra said too, that they proposed bill requires that the library have the policy in place in order for that.
So, yeah, I, we do have a challenge policy, I, I think it needs more work, uh, it, it's mostly just the, um, the form to do a formal challenge, um, I mean, so the policy itself needs to have more details, so. We'll get that by the next meeting, we'll have that and, and hopefully it can improve it. And that's it, that's all I have, unless, there's something else you wanna talk about or questions or? We've just signed.
Let's do bills.
We need to do the bills, yeah. Yeah, I mean. We need to.
Oh, we guys to sign, I mean.
Oh, it's here?
Yeah.
I don't see it.
Has everyone signed Elaine?
Um, any questions about the bills?
Sorry.
Cause I don't remember what it is, there was something, um.
Do you wanna look at it?
Um.
Where's the one page one? There.
We need to attend the brain health.
It might be different, cause I did have to take off a longevity that was on.
That was, that was one of those.
It was Kristin's, she's been here twenty years.
Is that, that's what I, is it just a long, uh, just a bonus for reaching?
Yeah, it just, she didn't know, but it goes through our, the payroll line, so. Kristen had given her the, there's a form to request it and, uh, it, it just, she just didn't.
It goes.
It goes a different way.
It goes, yeah, got a payroll thing, so.
So, yeah, but yeah, that was a twenty year longevity.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah, and Sharon twenty five, so we've got some, some long.
Big hitters.
Here. A lot of knowledge all stored in those two people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, do I hear a motion to?
So moved, pay the bills.
Second.
Same.
Uh, yeah. Okay, Mary Lou Lawrence.
Yes.
Owen Bresler.
I'm Carol Poffey.
I.
Catherine Harvey.
I.
Megan Frenzy.
I.
Sarah Peace. Michelle Givens. Um, okay, so then that's me, I mean, I really don't have anything separate from the Friends report, which we already discussed, unless, I mean, same goes for, um, you know, if anybody could knows anybody who might be interested in being a trustee, who might be interested in pulling the papers for Sarah's seat, that's still on the table.
No, I talked about it last, last month, that I've just been on for a long time and I would love to get somebody a little younger and maybe even somebody from a different part of town, like maybe the Beachwood area or anything, but I, I put out a few feelers and, um, going so well, I know, I, I'm gonna.
You want me to?
No, I'm happy to, but I need her phone number, hard to get people's numbers when they're not on the phone. They just give me his phone number and I'll come. Does anybody else have any great ideas? I tried, I have been trying people and, um, all the same things that came up with the Friends.
Yeah.
Come up again.
Right.
The young in this town are not interested in, they're probably all working.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can be a trustee and still work.
I know, I know, we all have, but I don't know, I don't, I know, this is, this is quite a user-friendly job, I'm just.
Yeah.
Is that everybody one two?
And a happy one, for the most part. And a happy job, I mean, this is like.
It's a very fun job where you really feel like you're doing.
You're asking something important and, um, and it's, it, it's not a lot of heavy lifting, you know, it's.
I mean, Alex is trying to think of people to ask, I've got one person.
I thought, is she like a member? You could probably get her off that list.
I know Ronnie said no, but she said no on behalf of.
She said Ronnie and her sis, her daughter Sarah, both said no.
Oh, but did you hear directly from Sarah?
No, and, well, I can, I mean, I left her a message and then she messaged me back, and so, um, it did say that, you know, it did, I mean, I don't know, you think I should call Sarah and say, your mom said no for you, y'all gonna follow that? This woman definitely lives in Cohasset. I don't know that she's a library person, you gotta be kind of library person. I, she's such a great person.
She is. She's very fast, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I could call, I could ask.
And her kids, her, her kids are, the youngest is what, eight?
I, I. Her before, and she was like, please, like I'm selling my house and building a house and I have kids. I've got her family.
Where do they live?
Exactly, that's why I asked this time, I think it might have been for the Friends.
And the, um, the road that goes up the hill behind Town Hall, like, I mean. No, no, not Archer's, but behind, uh, on the other side of town, like if you, if you.
Believe I've forgotten, anyway.
You know, if you drive.
Oh, we can all work on that.
You take, if you go up behind the art center, you go up that hill, she's on that street. Behind the art center, yeah, sorry, bad description.
People.
I don't know, we'll drive by her house, you and I can get out.
We do, I know, I know, I don't know those people.
But I mean, I think the thing about Susan though, she admits interest, I mean. Rouse somebody.
Picture of Michael.
Motion to adjourn, okay.
Harry's.
He's, I think Sam's age, so he's, I think he's seventy-nine maybe, or seventy, I think.